Okay, the time being 7:05, I'll call the July 13th, 2020 meeting of the Oxford Planning Board to Order. First on the agenda, we have the 2020 Planning Board Reorganization. And I'll just say, any position is open to anybody who would like it, okay? First off, I'll entertain a motion to appoint somebody to serve as Planning Board Chairman.
I'll make a motion that we nominate Richard Scholes to be the Planning Board Chairman.
Second.
Okay, seconded by Roger.
Oh, can we go back a minute, please, Rich?
Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't do that, I didn't read the thing. I'm not used to this stuff either, so I'll read the paragraph in question here pursuant to Governor Baker's March 12th, 2020 order suspending certain provisions of the Oxford, I mean, of the open meeting bylaw, General Law, Chapter 30A, subsection 18, and Governor Baker's March 15th, 2020 order concerning imposition of strict limitations on the number of people that may gather in one place. Meetings in the Town of Oxford will be conducted via remote participation to the greatest extent possible. We will strive to provide access to such meetings via a link to call in or other similar options. In the event we are unable to accommodate the same, despite best efforts, we will post recorded sessions of the meeting as soon as possible. Following the same, no in-person attendance of members of the public will be permitted, but every effort will be made to ensure that the public can adequately access the proceedings. Okay, getting back to the 2020 Planning Board Reorganization. We have a motion by Jeff to appoint me to serve as the Planning Board Chairman, which was seconded by...
Roger.
Roger. Okay, any discussion? There being none, all those voting in favor?
Aye.
Jeff?
Aye.
Norman?
Yes, aye.
Christine?
Aye.
And Roger? Is Craig on there? I see his name. Dale also. Dale, you said aye, okay.
Aye.
Okay, thank you, Craig. I abstain, the carry. Okay, next, I'll entertain a motion to appoint somebody to serve as Planning Board Vice Chairman.
I'd like to motion to appoint Jeff as Vice Chairman.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, seconded by Dale, motion made by Roger. Okay, further discussion? There being none, all those voting in favor, and I'll say aye. Jeff?
I'll abstain.
Norman?
Aye.
Christine? Where'd you go?
I saw her walking away.
Roger?
Aye.
Dale?
Aye.
Christine? Aye, okay, her mic's off, but I saw her lips move. And Craig?
Aye.
Okay.
I'm sorry, my...
It's okay, motion carried. Okay, entertain a motion to appoint somebody to serve as Planning Board Clerk.
I'll make a motion, we nominate Christine Burg.
I'll second.
Motion's been made and seconded, made by Jeff, seconded by Norman. Further discussion? There being none, all those voting in favor, I say aye. Jeff? Aye. Norman?
Aye.
Roger?
Aye.
Dale? Christine?
Aye.
Craig?
Aye.
Motion carried unanimously. Entertain a motion to appoint somebody to serve as Planning Board Assistant Clerk.
I'd like to nominate Norman LeBlanc to be appointed to the Planning Board Assistant Clerk.
Which made by Christine, is there a second?
I'd like to second that.
Seconded by Dale. Further discussion? There being none, all those voting in favor, I vote aye. Jeff?
Aye.
Norman?
Aye.
Roger?
Aye.
Dale?
Aye.
Christine?
Aye.
Craig?
Aye.
Okay, motion carried unanimously. Okay, now the next four motions, next four motions are for taking care of paperwork, and whose signature shall be affixed, though. First one is, entertain a motion to authorize the clerk, Christine, after majority vote of a board's acceptance of a plan, to affix her signature on all plans not requiring subdivision approval in lieu of a majority of the board's signatures until the next annual reorganizational meeting. So moved. Okay.
Dale?
Who so moved there? Was that you, Craig?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, seconded by Jeff? Norman? Okay, okay, any further discussion? There being none, all those voting in favor, I vote aye.
Aye.
Jeff?
Aye.
Norman?
Aye.
Roger?
Aye.
Dale?
Aye.
Christine?
Aye.
Craig?
Aye.
Okay, motion carried unanimously. Entertain a motion to authorize the Assistant Clerk, Norman, to act in the absence of the clerk after a majority vote of a board's acceptance of a plan to affix his signature on all plans not requiring subdivision approval in lieu of a majority of the board's signatures until the next annual reorganizational meeting.
I'll make that a motion.
Jeff made the motion, is there a second?
Seconded.
Okay, Christine seconded. Further discussion? There being none, all those voting in favor, I vote aye. Jeff?
Aye.
Norman?
Aye.
Roger?
Aye.
Dale?
Aye.
Christine?
Aye.
And Craig?
Aye.
Motion carried unanimously. Entertain a motion to authorize the Chairman, myself, to act in the absence of the clerk and the Assistant Clerk after a majority of the board's acceptance of a plan to affix his signature on all plans not requiring subdivision approval in lieu of a majority of the board's signatures until the next annual reorganizational meeting.
I'll make that a motion.
Jeff made the motion. Christine seconded. Okay. Further discussion? There being none, all those voting in favor, I vote aye. Jeff?
Aye.
Norman?
Aye.
Roger?
Aye.
Dale?
Aye.
Christine?
Aye.
Craig?
Aye.
Motion carried unanimously. Entertain a motion to authorize the Vice Chairman, Jeff, to act in the absence of the clerk and the Assistant Clerk and Chairman after a majority vote of the board's acceptance of a plan to affix his signature on all plans not requiring subdivision approval in lieu of a majority of the board's signatures until the next annual reorganizational meeting.
So moved.
Christine? Who was that, Norman?
Yeah. Yeah.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second it.
Seconded by Jeff?
Sure.
That was Craig.
Craig, that was Craig.
Oh, I'm sorry. Craig, I miss your face.
I don't know what's happening with my phone.
Okay.
Sorry about that.
That's all right. Okay, any further discussion? There being none, all those voting in favor, I vote aye. Jeff?
Aye.
Norman?
Aye.
Roger?
Aye.
Dale?
Aye.
Christine?
Aye.
Craig?
Aye.
Motion carried unanimously. Okay, now we go to the final two motions, and we'll entertain a motion to appoint somebody to be the first delegate of the CMR PC. Mary, who is it now?
It is Craig. Hi, Craig.
It's Craig. I nominate Craig.
There you go.
I'll second that.
Let me turn my video on.
Good timing, Craig.
Make that motion?
I made it, I seconded.
Norman made it and Jeff seconded. Okay, having fun at those meetings, Craig?
Yeah.
Okay. Further discussion?
Perfect attendance.
There you go, good. All those voting in favor, I say aye.
Aye.
Jeff?
Aye.
Norman?
Aye.
Roger?
Aye.
Dale?
Aye.
Christine?
Aye.
And Craig?
Aye.
Carried unanimously. Motion to appoint somebody as an alternate to the CMR PC. Mary, do we have anyone there now?
We don't, that's typically appointed by the Board of Selectmen.
Oh, we'll defer to the Board of Selectmen on that one, then. Yeah, I think they mentioned somebody at their last meeting last week.
I believe Terrence Cummings is...
Yeah, yeah, that makes sense, okay. All right, we got through reorganization, not much of a reorganization, but a reorganization.
One more year, right?
Huh?
One more year.
Yeah.
All right. The only item on the agenda now is a submission for 254 Sutton Avenue, application for site plan review and approval. Applicant, ECMR Property Group LLC slash East Coast Metal Roofing LLC owner Butler Fuel Corporation Incorporated, NKA Butler's RV Services Corporation. And I got a application dated July 1st, 2020. And we also got a plan in our packet. And we got a completed application. Everything looks good. Yep. I guess my only issue with the thing is, it's because it's a lot that has multiple people passing through, I believe there was a house in back. I'd like the applicant to speak to the fact of what they intend to do with this piece of property that's any different than what's on the ground now.
Through the Chair, I'd like to address the Board with your permission, okay? My name's Attorney David Dupont, I represent ECMR Property Group. Can everyone hear me?
Yeah.
Okay, there are no plans to change anything on the ground. We are looking for a change of use from the Fuel Depot, which the current owner can speak to, but we're seeking to operate a metal roofing company out of this location. ECMR Property Group will be the buyer, this Post Metal Roofing will be the tenant that will be providing the roofing service. There are no plans to change any structures or anything on the premises. We're going to use the existing property. There was a pre-meeting quite some time ago, during which they said they, we should line up some parking spots, so we did do a site plan that showed some parking spots on it, but that is not existing. And Jeff Smith is with us today, he's a Principal of ECMR Property Group, he could also answer any questions.
Yeah, I'm right here, just like Attorney Dupont. Nothing is changing on the property. The office space is going to be the office space, the stall space is going to be in the building in the back, so nothing's changing at all.
Rich, if I can interject, they did come through tech review a while ago, and they explained what they were doing, and I don't think there were any issues there. Just that they had to go through the process of getting all the approval. Did you vote with them?
We have filed with the Zoning Board of Appeals, but they have not set a date yet for the hearing.
I think that was the only recommendation we gave them before the ZBA, just to get the clearance on the changes.
They have applied to ZBA, I scheduled a public hearing for July 30th.
Is there any issue because it was an oil business before? Does that come up at all?
It has not, it's our understanding, there's a clean 21E. We do not yet own the property, the closing is contingent on us being able to operate in Oxford.
Gotcha, thank you.
Right now, that's a zone R1 district?
That is my understanding. But there was a, well, there was a non-conforming use that the last tenant in the premises was CK Smith. They were operating their propane delivery out of there, and that was last done in November of 2018.
Okay, well, I just, my only concern was I believe there's other property owners that access through the property. I believe you have a common driveway that runs in this property, and I just wanted to make sure everyone's rights were taken care of, and when you say nothing's changing on the site, then that indicates everything that applied to this site will not change.
Rich, yes, sir.
That we accept the plan as a... I'll second that.
Okay, further discussion? There being none? Well, all those voting in favor, I vote aye. Jeff?
Aye.
Norman?
Aye.
Roger?
Aye.
Dale?
Aye.
Christine?
Aye.
And Craig?
Aye.
Carried unanimously.
So can I ask for clarification, Norman, you meant to accept the submission?
Yes.
Okay, and let it run through the town boards?
Obviously, it's got to be contingent based on the ZBA giving them the permission.
Okay.
Both of the mini plans I reviewed, that was what I wanted to do.
Okay.
Okay, so it's, so there will be no public hearing per se, for us? Okay, we're just accepting the submission and letting it go through.
No, you have a public hearing, so...
Correct.
No sense in making...
Okay, so we'll just put it as an open agenda item for future meeting?
So we will, just, I have one question, we will have to come back to the Planning Board again, or once the ZBA is approved?
Board, so what I will do tomorrow is just distribute this application to all of the town boards and departments and get their comments in time for the next Planning Board meeting, probably after you meet ZBA.
We had an agenda item on our next meeting, which is, what, the 27th of July?
Yeah, okay.
And if the ZBA had no problems, you've got everything you needed for this change of use in the site. We will vote to approve the site plan.
The ZBA doesn't meet until July 30th.
Oh, they're not meeting until, why are we going to put it on there, then?
Right, okay.
Why don't we wait till the first meeting in August?
Sure, that works too, and that'll be August 10th.
Okay, we'll put it on the agenda item on August 10th, so we address it, we find out what the ZBA is, their conclusion, okay?
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
No problem, anyone have any questions? Well, thank you for coming to our meeting. We have you.
Thank you.
Good luck to you.
You. Take care.
Aye.
Okay, miscellaneous items. I don't know if all of you know this, but they're going through another advertisement for a economic, Director of Economic Development. Okay? So, that's happening in that level. Was that a meeting?
Ever start?
No.
No, never, okay.
No, no, the negotiations didn't pan out for either one of the ones we were really interested in.
Okay.
The other issue was, I had a meeting on Wednesday with the development management firm that owns Orchard Hill. Okay, they want to raise that site, they want to basically get rid of the development there, and they're seeking alternate sites in Oxford that has access to sewage.
Wow.
The bus lines. What was the trifecta, Mary? I forget the other one.
Water, sewer, bus line.
Sewer, water, bus line.
Okay.
Maybe gas, I don't know.
Yeah, maybe, maybe all that stuff, that's why they're interested in North Oxford somewhere. It was mentioned, there's a lot across from the police station, so...
That big, that big thing, yeah.
Isn't that flood plain over there?
I would think that's...
Some of it is, I don't know what it's got, I, Mary, did anything happen since Wednesday?
We're going to get two applications from what I understand, we have a tech review meeting tomorrow with the guy that did, what's the project, Mary, he did Sutton Ave there. We have all the issues.
Oh, Jasmine.
Jasmine, right. The project near the police station, he's meeting us tomorrow for 40B. What you're talking about, Rich, is a separate one, another group of people.
Yeah, 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 no, I didn't even know that this peruke there was planning on something over there. So maybe, maybe he's already got commitment to that piece of property, the one they mentioned is Sean Dybald mentioned it.
It's a different piece, it's a different...
Next to Plymouth Village. And the tech review, we got an issue with the flood plain, with the...
The bottom line, the bottom line is, this development company wants to stay in Oxford.
Right.
Okay, that satisfies the state. He just, he just wants to move it where it's more accessible to the amenities these people need. And he feels that the place up there does not meet his needs. So his intention would be to turn it over to the Town of Oxford when he's done raising it and vacating the premises, basically.
So it's got potential for 240B.
Well, my concern with 40B is, you know, you put in 100 units, 10 that are affordable housing. The other 90, you know...
Right.
How does, how does, how does the town do, isn't there a percentage that was supposed to have for low income?
10%.
We were never there, I think we, the most we were, it was 8%, Mary, is that what it was?
Somewhere between 7 and 8.
7 and 8, we were never up to 10, we were never up to 10. But if we have to do it the 40B route, we're going to have apartments and that up the yin yang to try to get there. It's been 100% of them are subsidized.
From what I understand, is we had, with Orchard Hill, we were 7.5%.
Yeah.
The second largest in the area type of housing, Webster had 8, we had 7.5, and Douglas had 4, they were third. Now that the change is going on at Orchard Hill, I want to get rid of that, like you said, and do another. Now, from what I understand, if they did 100 units, Mary, turn to wrongness, let's say they did 30 units 40B, all 100 count to 40B housing, right?
I'm not 100% sure, I think I did hear that today, that...
So if they do 100 units, and 30 or 40B, all 100 would go towards our 40B housing, but that's what they're trying to do.
Okay. I mean, I was impressed with the gentleman wanting to stay in Oxford, okay, I really was. I knew we wanted sewage, and I told him that we only have select sewage in the southern end of town and the northern end of town, and we only have a certain amount. So I don't know who's the keeper of sewage, I guess it's Sean. Okay, he was convinced he wanted to keep them here in Oxford, in North Oxford, okay?
So we're talking about the property from the Walker's house up, going back towards the high school that's...
That's the guy at Plymouth Village, that's a smaller project.
That's a separate one, okay.
The bigger project is growing off.
Anyway, I just wanted to let you know that this is something in the works. This is something in the works that may come in front of us on a rapid...
Wouldn't it go, Rich, doesn't it go to the ZBA, we're not even dealing with it, right?
40B, 40B we won't deal with, but I mean, this...
Goes to ZBA?
I don't know about this Orchard Hill thing.
I think if it's all affordable housing, then it might go, might go to the Planning Board, I'm not sure.
Yeah.
Have to look into it, have to look at it by law.
I want to think that's one of those automatic approvals, we don't have much say in what they can and can't do if it's all 40B.
Right, 40B.
Yeah, 40B I know has certain rules and regulations on that.
Right.
Can only do so much to prevent them violating your zoning, but...
That's why they're going before the ZBA, because they're giving them all kinds of leeway and stuff that we can't give.
Right. I mean, it's kind of like that halfway house that went into center of town, we didn't have much say in what they can and can't do.
Lot of changes going on in North Oxford, and the other project on Route 20.
Well, that's why I was concerned, I was concerned about sewage.
Absolutely.
We only have a transfer, we can only transfer so many gallons per day to, through Auburn. So that's, that's our only sewage, unless it can come out of Oxford Rochdale Sewer District, and I don't even know what they have for capacity either.
Well, we'll get a metafield tomorrow from what's his name, as far as how many units. I don't think he was talking a lot of units when he first came before us, wasn't he, Mary, it wasn't a lot, it wasn't a big piece of land. But...
It is a smaller piece of land, I think it's 2. something acres.
Oh, jeez.
You're not going to get...
No.
That's small.
You might get 15, maybe 20 units.
30 to 40 units.
And he was talking about 10 of them being subsidized and the rest being regular.
On 2 and a half acres?
2.735 acres.
That's small. That's the beauty of, that's the beauty of 40B.
Yeah, right, because they don't have...
Pack them in like sardines.
How many stories is it going to be?
In fact, this new Orchard Hill, they don't want, they don't want it packing lots, they want on-street parking. So that people pack right in front of their building.
Yeah, I love that in the winter.
Yeah, it'll be a private road, they'll be plowing it, it won't be the town's responsibility. Anyway, I just thought I'd bring you up to date on that, that I did attend the meeting, that they, basically, we're trying to keep all that subsidized housing within the Town of Oxford, so we maintain our percentages. Anyway, I got nothing else.
That's it.
Mary, you got anything else?
I do not, just...
You do not?
We have to come in, you said...
Yeah, well, I have to finalize the paperwork, and...
Send us an email when it's all finalized, then we'll call, we'll call you, and we can maybe meet you out in the parking lot.
Call me and make an appointment.
Yeah. Basically, yeah. Okay.
Okay.
You're muted.
Go for it, Christine.
You're muted, Christine.
See, I'm a helper.
Okay.
All right, so I'd like to make a motion to adjourn, sorry.
Okay.
Seconded by Roger. Further discussion? There being none, all those voting in favor, aye, aye. Jeff?
Aye.
Norman, Roger?
Aye.
Dale?
Aye.
Christine?
Aye.
And Craig?
Aye.
Aye. Well, thanks for coming.
All right, have a good night, everybody.
Stay safe, everybody.